Yeah, we um we be.
Monterey Peninsula Waterman District Special Meeting for Thursday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one at six oh one. Roll call, please.
All members are here.
All members, okay, we're gonna have a roll call now.
Director Paul?
Here.
Director Riley?
Here.
Director Anderson?
Here.
Director Adams?
Here.
Director Roberson?
Here.
And Director Edwards?
Here. Okay, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivi- individuals, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are none, but I do, in the spirit of Mayor Roberson's last meeting on Monday, I want to point out that Joel Pablo is Joel with two syllables. He was too shy to remind us of that on Monday. But there you have it.
Okay, it's Joel, okay.
Joel.
And, okay, Mayor, Director Roberson.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair. Please note on the agenda that your mayoral representative is not Dave Potter, it's Clyde Roberson, although can I still change my mind?
No, sir. No, sir, you can't. And I'm glad you're looking at this. Agenda.
There you go.
It's reading the fine print.
Well, that's as far as I got, y'all.
Well, that's good. That's good. Okay, our next item is a public oral communications. Anyone wish to address the board on matters not listed on the agenda that are within the preview of the district may do so only during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. Okay, Joel, open up oral communi- oral communication, three minutes.
Okay, so if you wish to make public comment and are participating by computer, use the raise hand function to indicate you have a comment. In addition, if you're calling in and watching on your computer, please turn off your computer speakers. If you're participating by phone, press star nine, and we will identify you by the last three digits of your phone number. You may identify yourself for the record and present your comment. Chair, Chair Edwards, seeing none, I will return this back to the board.
Okay, we'll give it a few more minutes, that's mighty quick. Give them a few more minutes.
We were hopeful after ten months of this, people would get their raised hand or star. Know it'll figure it out quickly, but you never know.
Yep. Okay, we're closed oral communication. First action item, General Manager.
Yes, there is not a true action that needs to be taken place, but I need a representation from the board that you've all received the statements of qualifications and the letters of interest from the candidates, and that you're prepared to move forward to action item number two, which is actually the hearing of statements, questions and answers, and then deliberation.
And?
Yeah, so I would just be looking for the board to affirm that they've received and reviewed all of the candidate information.
Oh, uh, we don't need a roll call on it.
No, we just said a confirmation would be sufficient.
Just confirmation? I, I have, I see Director Riley hand up. I see Vice Chair hand up. I see Director Roberson hand up. I've seen Director Anderson hand up. And I've seen Director Adams hand up.
Great, and we have moved the candidates into the role as panelists for this webinar, so we will be able to see them and they'll be able to see us and we'll be able to interact.
Okay, um, you wanna give the rules of this that we talked about?
Yes, I will do that. Soon as my screen opens, there we go. We appreciate everyone's attendance. We're moving into action item number two, which is consider method of replacement and select an appointee or conduct an election in voter division three. We will open with statements by the candidates regarding their interest to serve and their relevant qualifications. Each candidate will have two minutes. We will go in alphabetical order. That is Mr. Dayton, then Mr. Durbin, followed by Mr. Eisenhardt, Mr. Malik, and Mr. Washburn. Ms. Andrew has withdrawn earlier today. Following each candidate's statement, following the candidate's statements, all of them, each board member may ask each candidate up to two questions. We will proceed in two rounds of Board of Director Questions for each candidate, again in alphabetical order. Candidates are encouraged to be brief and show consideration for time allotted for other candidates and the public. No filibusters. Following Q and A, members of the public will have the opportunity to make comments, but not ask specific questions of the candidates. After public comment, it will be brought back to the board to consider nominations, if any. Nominations do not require a second. Once all nominees are set, a motion to close the nominations will be sought, and then the nominees will be acted on in a manner which will be described by Mr. Laredo at that time.
Thank you, GM.
Point of order?
Yes, go ahead, Director Riley.
I have a question whether two minutes is adequate for a candidate applicant to present their point of view. I would suggest three minutes, that's kind of the normal public comment section. I understand there are questions and interactions later than that, but I think they ought to be given a, a, a little more, a little more time to make their initial presentation. I'm just suggesting that as an option, I don't know the procedure going forward.
Okay, thank you, Director Riley. Any other board members have any feelings about moving it up to three minutes?
I would.
I have no objection.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Chair Edwards?
Yes, go ahead, Director Adams.
Please remind me, is there, are the candidates also going to have a limit on the time for their responses to questions that we ask?
We, yeah, we decided not to do that, but we're requesting them to be brief. That's the no filibuster rule, because some questions may be more detailed than others, and not every candidate will get a full two questions from every board member. This is the only item we have on our agenda tonight, so, you know, we're all hoping beyond hope that we can be expeditious without shortchanging anyone.
Right. And I'd like to ask all the candidates too, to please give us a visual when is their turn. I see two candidates. I'd like to see all your smiling faces, so the public can see your smiling faces, and the board can see your smiling faces. So, thank you for turning up, turning on. Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, we'll start.
I'm ready.
Go ahead, Devin.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kevin Dayton, and I am a Monterey resident. I'm a professional political consultant who's worked in government affairs, strategy and analysis my entire life, including an aide in the US House of Representatives after college. And I live in the old town neighborhood of Monterey. I'm the government affairs liaison for the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce, Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce, Government Affairs Director for Salinas City Center Improvement Association. Do a lot of contract work for various business and economic organizations, including Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, where I did a big analysis of housing. And I'm interested in this because I am concerned about population decline and school district enrollment decline that's happening in Monterey Peninsula. And I believe that water policy is a contributor to that. I called into the school board meeting in Monterey Peninsula Unified School District on Tuesday and said, you know, we really need to have some community leaders with the courage to say, this is, you know, we're struggling here, we're losing our children, families are moving away, the demographics are changing, and this is not a good thing for our region. As I think about what the water district can do, I realize there are lots of political obstacles as well as logistical obstacles, so we're getting that water supply in. And one thing I would like to see as a fifty year vision for this district, and you really need to think about fifty years considering the length of time it's taken to really not do much to solve your water supply problems, is to free people from the dependency on public utilities for the water. And I always get excited when I see those rare things pop up on your staff reports about, for example, new, new development using rainwater recycling systems. I was pleased when that proposition passed a couple of years ago that allows the rainwater collection not to be included in property assessments. And I see your agendas and committee agendas, and committees aren't meeting as much as they used to, but you know what? It's really not being thought of too much, because the battle is over, who's going to control the water? I would like to see the water ultimately controlled by the user to the extent possible. And yes, there will be all sorts of arguments made, well, you know, it's cheaper to, you know, build a water recycling plant than it is to provide everybody with, you know, cisterns. Once again, you need to think fifty years, and it's the same type of thinking regarding the distributed power with the solar rooftop panels. The technology advances all the time as the market demand grows. And I'd hate this district to have all of this huge expensive infrastructure when fifty years from now, it's not needed as much anymore. You're establishing all these fixed costs that you can't get rid of. There needs to be a lot more creativity and vision in what this board is doing. And keep in mind, the purpose of this board is you're supposed to supply sufficient water supply for what the people who, water reapers want. And it's not about controlling water to impact, you know, some sort of greater vision. That's just my opinion about it. I, I'm very uncomfortable with government agencies having such power over the future of a community and the destiny of a region. It takes away individual choice, family choice, and you know what? The families are choosing to do, the families are choosing to move away. That's bad. So that's gonna be my general vision and perspective about serving as a water board member. And it's a perspective that's different than others, I realize that, I think it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, who's next, General Manager?
Very good, thank you, Mr. Dayton, the next is Mr. Durbin.
Mr. Durbin, go ahead, you got three minutes.
Thank you, I wanna, I wanna say hello to the board members and rate pairs of the district. My name is James Durbin, I reside on the list of the drive within Division Three. Want to express my appreciation to the board for their service to the community and this opportunity to present my qualifications for appointment to the Division Three seat. I was raised in Sammontale County, I am a graduate of UC Santa Cruz. I study environmental studies and biology with an emphasis on water quality. My first job in the peninsula outside of college was at the Highlands Inn, at the wastewater plant, when they had a plant there. And back then, after studying the water issues of the Monterey Peninsula even in college, we're still faced with some of the same problems. Thirty years ago, I had a dream of being on this board, so I'm honored to be speaking with you tonight. I have a vast public and private experience working for public agencies in the water and wastewater sector. I consider myself a subject matter expert in water and wastewater treatment. I have the highest level of certification in wastewater treatment and distribution, and the second to highest level of treatment certification for water filtration plants. I really enjoy and I'm proud of my public service and being a public servant, and I'm very familiar with board policy, the Brown Act, and have attended and presented at many board meetings in the public sector that I work in. I'm currently working at Coastside County Water District in Half Moon Bay. I commute home on the weekends, and I would be available for board meetings, just so you're aware of that. I have a very flexible schedule. I had seen the many developments and failed projects that we have had in the peninsula, and it, it's sad, but we're where we're at, and I think you're doing a good job of representing the public. And I would be honored to help guide the board and the community to move forward with some decent projects and make sure that our children don't have to move away, like the previous candidate mentioned. I am concerned about my kids not being able to afford to live here, because when you limit water, you limit housing, and housing prices can skyrocket as we've seen. I think, I think that's about it, and I just, as a rate pair, I would like to encourage the board tonight to not go to an election. I think we have a nice list of very qualified candidates, and you will hear from them soon, and I am open to any questions that you have. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Who's next, General Manager?
Well, thank you, Mr. Durbin, next up is Mr. Eisenhardt.
Go.
Okay, Hart, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Director Edwards. Yes, my name is Mark Eisenhardt. You all have my letter and statement of qualifications, but I'll just summarize again. I live in Monterey, on Mar Vista. I'm an attorney, I've been practicing for twenty-five years. I am a certified appellate specialist. And I have served on a number of boards in the past, and I'm very interested in stewardship generally. And in terms of my water background, as I indicated in my qualifications, I have over about fifteen years' experience representing a private water utility. I'm fully aware of the processes involved with the PUC, GRCs and things like that. That said, my interest here is that, as a resident, it's very clear to me that the district handles and deals with extraordinarily important and weighty issues. I think Monterey County, we all agree, is superlatively unique in its water needs and struggles and challenges. And frankly, I very much invite the opportunity to be a part of that and part of solutions. I also think it's without a doubt a very exciting time for the district in light of Measure J, among, among other things. But I would be remiss if I didn't add something else that's motivating me fairly recent. I attended the board, the regularly scheduled board meeting on Monday. I was, I was overwhelmed. I, I couldn't believe it. The level of thoughtfulness, stewardship, camaraderie, intelligence, the real effort to problem solve among the board members, among the staff. It was really amazing, even when listening to comments and folks calling in to contribute their thoughts, all of it unmitigatingly was impressive. You are a very impressive body, and I would very much welcome the opportunity to work with you to meet your very high standards of stewardship and, and to help make a difference in, in what the district does. I'll leave it there.
Thank you, sir.
Very good, Mr. Eisenhardt, next up is Mr. Malik.
To unmute.
Yeah. He's in there, is Safwat.
Yeah.
Just a bit better?
There you go, sir, you ready?
Hello. Good evening, my name is Safwat Malik. I'm an architect, and I've been living in the Monterey Peninsula for the past twenty-one years, actually. And one reason I moved to the area is to get away from the crowd in the peninsula. I used to live in Los Altos Hills. And of course, the quality of life here is, I'm sure I don't need to sell you on it, because you all live here. The reason I wanted to join the board is to continue what Mr. Eisenstadt was a prior speaker.
Mr. Eisenhardt, yes.
Myself. He sort of captured the spirit of the board as it stands right now. It seems like it is a coherent board. They strive to get the work done rather than the politics of the work. And I am very excited to be a part of that. It is really very important to me to have a harmonious board, not necessarily that we are going to agree on everything, but we hear each other, we listen to each other, and then we respond respectfully. That really is, is a very important issue. I work with clients, I listen to them, I listen to their needs, and I try to fulfill their needs from my professional architectural standpoint. And similarly, the, this board is entrusted by managing our water situation. And I would love to see the path that you're on right now to come to fruition, and hopefully that would be fairly soon, and it won't take years to make it happen. The, 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 the there's gotta be equity in, in solving the water issues. There's gotta be something that is sensitively taken care of throughout the entire Monterey Peninsula, where the board jurisdiction is. Make quick decisions. I've worked with staff being on the other side of the counter, and I found every possible cooperative idea and action that I can speak of. It's like, they haven't paid me, by the way. I'm just saying that because it comes, it comes from the heart. And, and, and people that are hearing me and staff know that I'm truthful about that. I really, I'm not a man of too many words. I, I'd like to listen much more than I speak, and I would welcome your questions to me and of me, much more than I just keep blabbering. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Malik. The last candidate and speaker is Mr. Washburn.
Uh, Mr. Washburn, you gotta unmute yourself.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Al Washburn. Brief history of my career, as I graduated from Carnegie Tech in nineteen sixty-five. Went to work for Boeing for five years, and then came down to the Monterey Peninsula to work at the Naval Postgraduate School in nineteen seventy. And I've never left, and I have no intention of leaving, I like it here. I retired from the postgraduate school about fifteen years ago. I'm eighty. I spent all that time in the Operations Research Department. In my application, I included a link to my resume, and if any of you have looked at that link, you might be disappointed if you're trying to look for all my expertise in water, because there's very little of it. The only thing in all that list would, would possibly be a thesis by Charlie Zuhowski. In nineteen seventy-eight, this was after the, the big water crisis in nineteen seventy-five. He was making a quantitative decision-making attempt at figuring out what the right amount of rationing was to do if this sort of a thing should, should occur again. And he went through the usual steps of trying to assess what people's utility for water and so on was. At the conclusion of that, a copy of that report went to the Cal-Am, and another copy went to the Monterey County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. And that, that's, that's all amongst the people that control water around here. And other than that, the only connection I have to water management was something that happened last year. Some friends of mine were concerned about Dave Stoltz's report to the effect that, no, we actually didn't need a desalination plant, at least not for a few years, because the aquifer storage and recovery was going to be sufficient. And their, their concern was that this was a dangerous idea, because it's risky. The nice thing about the desal plant, and I give them credit for this, is that it makes you independent of the rainfall, and you can never predict what Mother Nature is going to do. By the way, I expect all of you to be smiling more, given all the rain that we've had. It's, it's really been quite a downpour here, I'm happy to report. Anyhow, my expertise is quantitative decision-making in the face of uncertainty, and I happen to be in the National Academy of Engineering, so they thought my presence in the protest might be beneficial. So anyhow, I looked at the question of whether Dave Stoltz had been overly optimistic in making his assessments, and I talked to Jonathan Lear a little bit about the simulation that he had done of the operation of the system over several years, and finally ended up concluding that there was nothing wrong with the simulation and that the, the Stoltz report was actually a reasonable one, and that I had no reason to argue with it, so I sort of bowed out of the operation. But that got me interested in water issues, hence my application. My, my bias in that direction, by the way, is that there are circumstances where we ought to, we ought to have a desal plant. If, if you could convince me that we were at risk of having serious water rationing every other year, and by serious water rationing, I mean my rhododendron plant is gonna die or something like that, then I'd be in favor of the desal plant. Even though it, it might double the water rates, that amount of suffering would not be worth it. On the other hand, if that sort of thing is only gonna happen every other
Mr. Washburn, I'm glad to cut you off there, you, you have four minutes, so could you wrap it up right fast?
I think the step, the sound has dropped a little bit.
Somebody blocked him off, shed him off. Don't shed. Okay. We're gonna get into questions now. Is that all the candidates we went through, GM?
That is, that is all, and Mr. Washburn was the last. I think we used his nineteen seventy-eight report to develop a linear programming model that the Water Demand Division used in the late eighties, early nineties rationing. And that is completely untrue, but it would have been unique if, if it was true. And that is completely untrue, but it would have been unique if it was true.
All right, sir.
So, yes. Yeah, we're going to return back to alphabetical, which would be Mr. Dayton first, and then you can call on the board members for questions.
Okay, we're going to start off with Division One and we'll work our way down. That's the best way I can do it. That way I'm first.
And just so the public understands, not every director will ask every candidate the same questions or even necessarily two questions. So there can be differences or there will be similar questions posed to each candidate. So manage your expectations. It'll be a little bit different for each one.
And my question will be the same to all of you. My first question, and my first question is this. Why should the board select you to fill this position? Why should the board elect you to fill this position? Mr. Dalton, you're first.
Dayton.
Mr. Durbin.
Durbin. That's why the general manager are announcing your names. So I wouldn't mess them up.
Yeah, Mr. Dayton.
Yes, thank you. I'm first on the alphabetical list. I am coming in here with a long-term vision and with a concern for the long-term viability of the community that lives here. While I respect a lot of the legitimate interests that are on the board right now, I ultimately am concerned about having enough water to do things like building housing. And you know what? I see you trying to get the State Water Resources Board to, you know, give that alteration for Condition Two. And I haven't heard anything about it recently. That's the kind of stuff that I'm interested. I like the things that your technical advisory committee is doing and I especially like the stuff that the Supply Committee does. Thinking about ways to provide water rather than thinking about ways to say, how much minimum water do we need to get through life? And actually, as you know from when I spoke a year or two ago, I think that Mr. Stoltz, this is controversial. David Stoltz's supply and demand chart is generally pretty accurate. However, the question is, how did it become accurate? And I believe that's become accurate by controlling population. That's what it is. I guess it's a matter of the chicken or the egg. My belief is you squeeze the water supply, people move. Then you say, oh, you don't need it. You squeeze it some more and you've got population contraction, which I'll have to admit, some people in this particular district really would like to see. I know when I ran for school board and talked about reducing enrollment decline, that didn't go over too well with a lot of people. They want a change in the community and they moved here for equality of life, moving away from the crazy Bay Area in Los Angeles. And you know what? They want this community to be a certain way. I have a high school senior and a high school junior at home with a wife. We are actually a real family living here. They go to Monterey High School. And you know what? I want them to be able to live here. They like living here, but they say, you know, Dad, it's not real too friendly for young people here. It's expensive and, you know, it just doesn't feel like it's family-friendly. And I said, yes, you know what? There is demographic change going on. So I'm going from that approach. And once again, I believe that one of the ultimate answers to this is to free the individual, the household and the business from having to depend on a public utility for its water.
Thank you, sir. The next one, General Manager.
I think what we agreed to is we go through all of the divisions with questions to Mr. Dayton and then a second round and then move on to Mr. Durbin. So Division Two would be up.
Okay. And that's the... Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I'm Division Two. Kevin, we've known each other for a while and I've appreciated your creativity and many of your comments. We've even talked about that.
Oh, same here. I think we have differences of many opinions, but I think we're both, you know, creative visionary people who probably can find common ground on quite a bit if you, you know, really look at it.
Well, my question to you is this freedom from utility services, water utility services. Do you think that the water supply system should be dependent on... Let me change the question. Do you think that the Water Management District or Cal-Am should not be water providers?
I don't think we're at the point where we can completely eliminate the system. And even 50 years down the road, there probably needs to be infrastructure in place for certain emergency things. However, I think that we should give... And of course, there's equity issues involved in this, too. That's why this is not something that, you know, you could just throw out there as a talking point. This would need to be seriously discussed and analyzed as a real vision. But reaching that point that says, suppose somebody would like to have a swimming pool in their household and, you know, they want to collect water to do this. And, you know, if they want to do that as a supplement to already providing water for their own household, let's encourage them to do that. Right now, you know, hardly anybody has any grass on their yards and setting aside the issue about whether grass yards or even, you know, right environmental choice. You know, I look at that and I say, you know what? I'm not sure that these households have determined not to have grass because they don't really want grass. They do it because of water supply issues and the resulting cost and the need to conserve water. So I don't know about 50 years down the road, but one thing I bring up is, you know, if we start shifting in the direction toward building, individual buildings or recycling, water recycling, water collection, condensation-type equipment, things that are going on in other countries, maybe we can say, you know what? We don't need to build additional infrastructure. But right now, the board is not even talking about that. They're going in a different direction.
Thank you. Division Three? Oh, sorry.
We're trying to find a platform.
It's all silence. I don't get it. Okay. Division Four, please.
Mr. Dayton? I'm Karen Paul, Division Four Director.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi. Okay. Mr. Dayton, how would you describe the core mission of the Water Management District?
Well, the core mission is in your foundational documents, which I cite in my application letter. And what I really want to emphasize in there is that it provides sufficient water for the needs of the people in the district. Now, there's, of course, conservation listed in there as well. But what it is, is if you want to run a hotel and bring in guests, the lack of water should not be an impediment to you to actually do that. If you want to have a big family, you know what? You shouldn't be saying, well, really, we can't afford to live here because there isn't sufficient water and therefore we have to pay these outrageous rates, you know, for a big family here. I want to have it... I don't... You know, for people who don't live on the Monterey Peninsula, people don't go through life like that. Of course, outside of California, you know, men on the East Coast, they don't have that issue at all. Here in California, we've got a little bit of a different situation. But I want to say, you know what? Can we have business owners, customers, residents making decisions without having this water supply issue hang over them all the time? And that would be what I would be looking for for this particular district. You know, this district, I think, should be getting a lot more national attention for its situation because it's in a fairly interesting circumstance where all of your water comes from, you know, the rainwater and you're isolated. It's a prestigious place to live and it's got water problems. You have the opportunity to be a leader in thinking about what's the future of water, not only for this region, but for a state, the country and the world.
Thank you. Let's move on to Division Five, Director Anderson.
Yes, Mr. Dayton. I am Amy Anderson, Director.
Hello.
I'm curious about what nonprofit or civic boards that you have served on.
You mean boards of directors of organizations or governments?
Boards of directors. Have you been a board?
I'll tell you about it. Yes. First, I'll tell you about I've served on the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce Board. I'm on the Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association Board. I'm on the Salinas Valley Taxpayers Association Board. I was the first Chair of the Transportation Agency for Monterey County Oversight Committee, which has 20 members and 20 alternates. I'm right now Chair of the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District Bond Oversight Committee. I'm on the Salinas City Elementary School District Bond Oversight Committee. I'm on the Monterey-Salinas Transit Measure Q Oversight Committee. I'm the Secretary of the Board of Trustees for my church. I was an appointee to the California Wage Board when it met in the 2000s. I've been involved in many civic activities, but I've never been elected to office. I did run for... I tried to get appointed to the school board last year and I was not selected in the end. I was in the final round on a 4-2 vote. I lost. And then I ran for school board and lost that handily.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to our mayoral rep, Mayor Roberson.
Okay, thanks. Hey, Mayor Clyde here.
Hello, Mayor Clyde. Someday we'll see each other in person again.
Yes, we will. Hey, you've kind of answered this question, but this is a question I'll be asking all of the fine people that have applied and I'm so grateful that you have. And basically, is Measure J was passed by the voters in the water district for the district to pursue public ownership of the water system. So my question is, how can you make public ownership happen?
Well, you know, actually, I'll tell you, you're locked in because the democratic will of the people is to do this. I do... I am questioning whether or not the econ... Whether or not you're going to save money from this. I'll make a prediction if it ever happens. I don't think you're going to save any money on it. And I remember the big presentation that was made, maybe a year and a half ago, where all the people were. And, you know, there were some flaws in that sort of thing. One of them, as I point out, you know, Cal-Am is one of the biggest property taxpayers in the Monterey Peninsula area. I think it's number three. And it's going to be very interesting what's going to happen with that land, how it's going to be transferred. I'm sure you're going to be dealing with this in the courts for many years because Cal-Am is adamant that they're not going to sell. And, you know, in the end, when it doesn't make any money and we have... One thing I like about Cal-Am being involved is their interest is in selling water. So I don't see them as an obstacle to water supply. I am always nervous about elected boards and I know that there's a strong movement out there to say, you know what? We don't want any growth in our community. And I understand where they're coming from, especially if you move from, you know, the Bay Area, which is just crazy, and you move to this special place. But I'm, you know, I'm just leery about having a, you know, total control over water supply that's key to the area based on elected officials. And of course, your elected officials, I'm trying to get on as appointed board. But, you know, I'm not sure that the... I like the check and balance that's already in effect here between the private and the public interests.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. And finally, last but certainly not least, our supervisor, Mary.
Kevin?
Hello, Supervisor.
This will be a twofold question, so you'll have to answer it succinctly. Can you give me an example of work that you have done on a team that was successful and why you think it was? And then is an example of work that you did on a team that wasn't successful and why you think that was?
Well, I'll tell you what my latest success is. I am the... In 2017, the Salinas Downtown Vibrancy Plan, which the city council had passed in 2015, was floundering. Everybody was saying, oh, just another report on a shelf. And that group, Salinas City Center Improvement Association, hired me as our first and right now only government affairs director. And you know what? Right now, if I look at Monterey County and the positive... There's a lot of bad things happening, even today. But I just wrote an article for the Salinas Valley Business Journal because I said, we've got to put in some positive news here. Everybody's discouraged. And the downtown area, it's thriving, the blighted buildings there. I was very involved in, you know, proposing and pushing forward that vacancy accountability ordinance because I said, as long as those property owners who have vacant property aren't accountable to the public to it, they're not going to be able to, you know, they're just going to sit on that land because they've got some sort of interest in it. And we forced them out and things are happening there all over the place. And if you want to talk about a failure, I'll tell you the failure I have right now. You know what's going on because I've openly admitted yesterday, I failed to get this parking garage that's in the downtown vibrancy plan moving forward. I've been unable to find a champion within the county apparatus who will push it. And Supervisor Leao, which who I think he has some very good arguments. He says, let's build that parking lot now in that spot. And I'm still struggling and, you know, we had our land use committee meeting and, you know, we're realizing we may not be able to get that parking garage for a long time. And I knew what was going on for a couple of years and did some meetings with people and whatever I was doing, it didn't light any fires. So, you know, I deal with failures. In politics, you deal with failures all the time. It's always nice to get a victory.
Great, thank you. Going back to the potential second round for questions. Again, directors, if you choose not to ask a question, that's fine. We are going to give everybody their due. As I said, this is the only subject and it's an important one tonight. Mr. Dayton and others coming, I would encourage brevity because it is 45 minutes into the meeting, so we have some time to go. But returning it to Chair Edwards as Division One rep, you have a second question?
Okay. My second question is, what do you believe are the three biggest challenges facing the district?
The first challenge is an utter failure of various factions in the peninsula to be able to get together and come up with a common solution. And I'll offend everybody here. I still like to see desalination, a smaller desalination plant. And people have got to get together and do that. I agree with the San Diego County Water Authority. They put up that Carlsbad desalination plant because they said, we've got to have this, we've got to have a diverse source of water. If we have an earthquake, we're going to lose our, you know, infrastructure coming in from the Colorado River. We might not be able to get our water through the, you know, California Water Project. We need this desalination. They're paying about 26,000 an acre foot for it, which seemed crazy back when they were talking about it. I have no idea how much it would cost to do it here at the Monterey. I've seen groups that are opposing claim something like 8,500 per acre foot or something like that. It's crazy. But I still think there needs to be some sort of desalination solution so that we are not dependent on rainfall or dependent on, you know, other apparatus that may break if we ever have an earthquake. You know, we've got a big fault off the ocean here that people don't know about. We've got tsunami risks, things like that. So that's... The water supply issue, of course, the factions, and also a long-term vision that moves beyond the immediate fights that go on all the time. These fights are very tiring for the public. They're sick of it.
Thank you. Director Riley?
I'm curious a little bit about this point of order question about... I thought we just asked our first question of Kevin Dayton. I thought we were now asking our first question of James Durbin. I'm curious about what the procedure is that we're going to follow.
Well, let's take a sidebar on that. You know, we talked about two questions. You know, we could come back around. I know we'd like to hear from the other candidates since we've only heard the second question from the Chair. Chair Edwards and Vice Chair Paul, would you like to mix it up and come back around or finish off with... or finish off with the candidates with two rounds?
Well, I would like one round per candidate.
And then come back.
That gives that, that candidate a chance to take a breath.
Okay.
And take a breath, and we can come back again for that second round.
And Director Paul, in agreement, I, I think that's fair.
That is my preference also.
Great, okay.
That's my preference too.
And we're gonna, we're gonna go in reverse order of the directors for Mr. Durbin just so we can also take a breath and mix it up. So, Mr. Durbin, would you please prepare yourself? And Supervisor Adams, would you start this round of questions?
Unmuted.
You need to unmute there, Director Adams.
Thank you.
Very nice to meet you, we've not met before. Could you just describe to me the difference that you think between your concepts of leadership and teamwork?
Thank you for the question. That's a, that's a great question. It's something you usually hear in an interview for a job. Leadership, I think.
Oh, this is a job.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, thank you for clarifying that. I'm sure it is, and some. Leadership, I, I look towards setting a good example and leading by example and motivating the people around you to come together and put their efforts forth towards a common goal. Allowing the discourse and the dialogue of opposing and new ideas, I think should be welcomed to facilitate development of good solutions. And I'm sorry, Supervisor Adams, and, and then what was the second part of the question, leadership?
Teamwork.
And teamwork. So I, I think good leadership leads to good teamwork. And if you have a good leader, allowing everyone to participate without taking over the process and taking those good ideas and letting people feel free with their ideas facilitates the teamwork. And then when people feel engaged and involved in the decision and participating in the decision and the opportunity to share ideas, I, I think that comes with good leadership.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Great, Mayor Roberson?
Yeah, same question, and I'll be asking the same question out of, out of fairness. And that is Measure J was approved by the voters and it directed the water district to pursue public ownership? So I would ask, how would you make public ownership happen?
Excellent question. I did vote for Measure J. I think it's a very powerful vote that the public spoke with. With the expertise I have with infrastructure, I'd want to be very cautious about approaching the purchase of the Calum system. As we all know, Calum sold the Felton system much, much smaller than our system for quite a steep profit after they bought it from the public. They sold it back and still turned a pretty good profit over. I think it would be very important that we did a good condition assessment and facilitate the evaluations, the pros and cons. And of course, negotiating and trying to minimize the legal costs throughout that. But I would want to make sure that we are very careful about what we're buying ourselves into and that it will pencil out. Me personally, I would pay more water if the public owned it. I've worked in the private sector and the public sector. I think there's a lot of fine people over at Calum. I have a lot of friends and colleagues over there. I would never sit in a public meeting and say anything bad about them. But I think the, the public should own the water system and be in control of their destiny. And I, I think it's, I think it's a shame that Calum got out of having Marina Coast own the D-Sol plant back before the regional plant, the regional project failed. I think, so that cautious.
Great, thank you. Director Anderson.
Yes, Mr. Durbin, what do you think the job is of a board member for the water district? And please be specific.
Setting policy is, is really, I think, the, the main function of a board. Is setting policy and working with the general manager, providing the general manager direction through consensus, treating the public and staff with respect at all times. But I, I think it's really about setting policy and making very tough decisions like, how are we going to go about procuring and taking over the, the Monterey system if that's what we're going to do?
Thank you.
Great. Director Paul?
Actually, my question was so similar to Director Anderson's that I think that you have answered it. So I, you can move on to the next director.
Oh, good. Director Riley.
Yeah, welcome, nice meeting you, Mr. Durbin. My question, I am not going to ask the same question to each candidate, so you're going to get a new one here. What gap do you think you might fill based on your view of what the board currently represents?
I, I think I have a lot of technical and subject matter expertise to offer. I, I understand what it takes to get a project going from concept through design through permitting and to completion. I've managed probably close to a hundred million dollars worth of water and wastewater capital improvement projects over the last twenty years. And I'm aware of the different types of problems that can come up. And I think I would be a little bit of a subject matter expert that could kind of bridge and explain complex water issues in simple, simple language. I'm sure all of you are very well-versed in water supply. And I think I would be a consensus builder among the board and we could do things together. Not that that's a gap for you guys right now, but that's another thing I have to offer.
Great. And finally, Director Edwards.
Yes, that same question I asked the first one. Why should the board select you to fill the position?
I've been, I, I've been doing water supply my whole life. I am very familiar with the area and California water law and supply and the need to diversify water supply. I've attended many board meetings, so I would be very up to speed very quickly on the matters that you guys are handling right now. And just my experience and my comfort with infrastructure and what it takes to really make things run and see if it really is in the best interest of the public to buy out the Calum system.
All right, thank you, sir.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Durbin. We're going to turn our attention to Mr. Eisenhardt. And we'll start once again with Division One Director Edwards.
Okay, Mr. Eisenhardt, the same question.
I know the question. I know the question, yes. I think that there's a number of things I would touch upon. First of all, and, and this is clearly an interview. And so to respond, look, I got twenty-five years' experience as a fiduciary. That's what I am, as a litigator. Among other things, I owe the highest duty and stewardship to my, to my clients. And, and that level of fidelity and stewardship and doing no harm is something I have a lot of experience with. And I'm very proud of the work I've done over my quarter century as an attorney. And I would offer those skillsets as a director, which I think are required. I'm a quick learner. I'm probably the polar opposite of Mr. Durbin, who, with all of his experience in water, mine is, well, let's just say, and I'll be kind, less. But let me tell you about what I do. You know, many times I'm presented with many, many inches of documents, emails, whatever it is, and I have to review them and size them up to figure out if there's a claim or what the problem is or where to go. I am remarkably fast and a very quick learner and assessor, and I work hard. The third thing I would argue is I'm a solution finder. That's what I do for a living. There's a conflict, there's a dispute. I'm not just a gladiator that comes in to fight for the client, but I'm supposed to find a path forward in sometimes very, very complicated terrain. And I'm proud to say that way more often than not, I do that for my clients and I find the solution. Sometimes when I inherit a case because the prior lawyer and firm that had it was unsuccessful in navigating it. So I have a long track record of, let me just say, navigating problems and, and getting to the solutions. And then finally, because this is not an election, I don't think, but an appointment, it is an interview, as I said. And I think you are in a unique situation, directors, to get a, a colleague that you can select. And let me just say, I play well with others. Going back to the team player question versus leadership. And I actually agree with Mr. Durbin, Durbin, they're not mutually exclusive, there's a lot of overlap. But one of the things I think I can bring is I ask questions and I work well with groups to help discover and find new solutions. It's just something I do, I've done it my whole career. I know that was a long answer, I apologize, but that's the answer.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to Mr. Riley, Director Riley.
Yeah, welcome, Mr. Eisenhardt.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to take a little bit of a different tack on, on this question. You're an attorney, so I assume that your job is to find a solution. So I don't doubt at all that you've been in that arena before. What I'm concerned about is that this is a representative from District Three. Can you describe, how would you describe your connections to the Monterey community?
Oh, sure. Thank you. As I indicated, we certainly, we live in Monterey. My, let me just back up a bit. Our law firm that I founded, one of the founders, our principal office is in San Jose. But we opened up a satellite office here in Monterey. I've been litigating in Monterey for a number of, well, actually decades. And so it made sense to open up an office here. And late December of twenty, let's see, December of twenty, I'm sorry, nineteen. So it was fairly recent. We, we, my wife and I went and destro, we purchased a home here and we've been living here ever since. A lot of it hungered down, obviously, during this plague. But that is my connection to Monterey. We have been coming here for getaways from San Jose for literally thirty years, my wife and I. But we only started living here at the end of, well, a little over a year.
Great. And moving to Director Paul.
Hello, Mr. Eisenhardt.
Yes.
Is there anything about you that would preclude you from fully participating as a board member of this agency? Anything to do with your law practice, your property, or could be other sorts of things?
Great question. Let me just start. I think what you are asking is, are there other constraints to my time? Or anything else?
Well, time could be one, or, or conflicts of interest.
Oh, well, if you're talking about my client base, I've never represented any person or entity that would have posed a conflict of interest in the past. I don't know that that's frankly the principal area of my litigation practice moving forward. Regarding time, you know, there are no other boards or organizations that are taking up my time and my energy apart from my work and my family life. And to put that more in context, Director Paul, as I indicated, you know, my, my tenure here in Monterey unfortunately was burdened by, everybody knows, we're all hungered down. It's been quite a challenge for me to quench my thirst to be a part of the community that I'm living because of the times that we live in right now. And when this opportunity presented itself and I was very clear-eyed about the fact that this is my focus, if I were to be appointed, then that would be my focus and I would not extend myself elsewhere, certainly not in any fashion that would be in the public, so.
Great, thank you. And Director Anderson?
Yes, Mr. Eisenhardt. You moved, you, you moved her from, you said, the San Jose area?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So what kinds, I don't know how long you lived there, but what kinds of community organizations, nonprofits, any kind of organizations that you are involved in, any boards that you are on? Neighborhood associations, something like that?
Excellent question, thank you. We lived there for over a quarter of a century, my family. And prior to that, I had lived in, I grew up in New York and went to school back east. The organizations, some of which I've listed on my statement of qualifications include being a board member of the Silicon Valley Chapter of the ACU at a very exciting time, if you don't mind my saying, during the last administration. In addition, I've served as a, a board member and director for several years with my spiritual organization. And I've been involved in other organizations, not as a board member, but I think that's an opportunity for me to say something about that. I'm not a rabid joiner. I, I, I'm very selective. Going back to Director Paul's question, you know, my, my time is precious. And as much as I want to give back to my community and participate, it's important to me that it's something that speaks to me. I have been, frankly, I feel called to assist and serve here. And I'm hungering very much to be a consequential member of my community. So to answer your question more directly, you know, there's been about two or three organizations that I've served in, in, in leadership as a director, if you will, on the board. Many other organizations I volunteered for and participated in other ways. So there, there, there it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Roberson?
Oh, I can't hear you.
Clyde, you're.
Yeah, I got it, thank you. I've only done that once so far, new world record. So the voters directed the water district to pursue public ownership. As a director, how would you make public ownership happen?
Well, obviously with input from all sources, we want to figure out how to get funding, low-interest loans, things like that. And we, but, but it's important to navigate all of the challenges to make it, make it happen, not only because it was the will of the people, but because it's, I believe, essential. I cannot give you particulars, Mayor, Director Roberson. I, I wouldn't, I'm, I'm just not knowledgeable enough on the intricacies. But what I can, if I may, very briefly share is one of my experiences when living in San Jose and Santa Clara County was when the whole Enron crisis came about. And very briefly, I'll just say this, when the fuel prices were going through the roof, if you remember that, and there was this energy shortage. The city that I never knew, Santa Clara, that I never knew, had its own utility. And the residents of Santa Clara with their publicly-owned energy utility were sitting fat. They didn't have any increases in energy. They were doing just fine in the crisis. And I'll never forget that. And the fact of the matter is, is that Monterey County, you know, without any import-export of water and with the, with the water shortage and with all of the other considerations, obviously environmental among others, that level of challenge and difficulty and sometimes crisis will be begs for the public option and, and, and not to leave it to private enterprise. So I support it and I'll just leave it at that.
Very good, thank you. And finally, Supervisor Adams?
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Yes.
Marcus, so I'll just ask you, I want you to tell me something different than the questions that others have asked you. Why do you really want to do this?
Oh, my gosh. Oh, I really, really want to serve my new community. I, I love living where I, I cannot tell you. I'm actually back in my San Jose office, first time in two months I've stepped back into San Jose. I was dreading to drive back to San Jose, and not just because of it was raining cats and dogs. I love where I live, I love the people in Monterey, I love my community, I love working with my clients all over the I love where I live, I love the people in Monterey, I love my community, I love working with my clients all over the peninsula. And I so hunger to give back and be a part of, of my community, I can't say it any other way.
Thank you.
Very nice, okay. We're moving on to the second half of the alphabet. Mr. Malik, if you prepare yourself and we'll start again with Supervisor Adams going the other direction.
Hello, Mr. Malik. And I think you have your microphone muted. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, and I assume you can hear me as well.
Yes, I can hear you as well.
Okay, may I just say something first, please? I have been suffering from sciatica pain for the past two weeks. And I thought I could be sitting here calmly and answering your questions, but it, as you may have noticed, I'm jumping up and down, pacing and everything else. So I will do my best answering your questions and then I'm gonna have to retire, if that's okay with you.
It's, it's so much okay with me that I will pass on my question and let someone else go.
No, you go ahead, please, I would love to hear your question yourself.
Okay. Which do you think is more important when working with a team? To be part of the crowd or to stand up and carry your own message?
I usually, and I participate in a lot of meetings, public and private, corporate and clients. I usually sit down and keep my mouth shut until I hear what people have in their minds. And then I don't blabber. If I don't have anything good to say, I will save the agony to the rest of the board members. I'm not here to, to take on stage and be this or that or the other. I, 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 again, I'm respectful of people's times and people's ability to, to take part of their evenings every month, plus all the additional work they have to do. And I'm not about to abuse this privilege, so that is a commitment that I have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mayor Roberson, I think we have an idea what your question is going to be, but please go ahead and add.
I was gonna ask if Dave Stolt would lend me a thousand dollars.
David, David can do that, no problem. I know how, how generous David is.
Very, very nicely said.
Sure.
And my question is, the, the public through a vote on Measure J directed the Water District to pursue public ownership of the water utility to buy out Cal-Am. As a director, do you agree with that and how would you make it happen?
I know there, first of all, yes, I do agree with that. And I, there are some kinks on some details that have not worked out. And it's up to the team to roll up their sleeves and be open with their community, with their community. Because they are, we represent the community that we are serving. And we need to listen to the community and then come back to the board and, and tell our story. That's the only affair to do it.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Director Anderson?
Have you, it's a two-part question, have you attended virtually any of the Water Management District meetings?
I have, I have been very inactive in the last year or year and a half. Prior to that, I have attended several meetings of the, of the Water Management District Board.
Okay, so you're familiar with the number and complexity of all the decisions that have to be made. Do you feel that you can fit being a director on this board into your very busy schedule as a developer and an architect?
I'm a quick learner. I am not living just for me or for my glory or for my wealth. I am a community member and I believe in that and I respect it. So yes, I will find the time. Right now, I can't tell you all the issues and all the questions about the issues that the board is, is dealing with, but I know that the political climate in this board is open to listen to one another. And you probably know what I'm talking about and I don't need to dwell on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Director Paul?
Hello, Mr. Malik, thank you for coming on a time when you're not feeling well. I'll get right to the point so you can go sooner rather than later. Is there anything about you, your life, your, your business or your family or anything else in your life that would preclude you from fully participating on the board?
I am reaching a point in my life where I'm scaling down and putting time in community and taking care of my family. And I'm still practicing architecture and I'm still building buildings.
And giving away my money?
Only a thousand dollars?
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Riley?
Hi, Safwa, yeah, I've known you for a few years. I want to, I want to go back to an issue that was quite controversial about a year or so, a half ago, about the demand supply numbers for the peninsula. And I want to ask you, do you think there's a pent-up demand for growth that is going to be large, moderate, what? Because we've, we've kind of adopted a supply strategy that makes some assumptions, so what, what's your opinion?
My opinion is to get the politics out of it. And, and look at the, at the community and what is the community asking us to do? We don't want to be czars in here and make our own declarations completely away from, from our neighborhoods. And I really firmly believe that we need to listen. And I think we've been through recently certain unfortunate situations where when people don't listen, things go haywire.
Okay, thank you very much. And finally Chair Edwards?
Hey, I think you answered my question all the way through, but just one short sentence. Why should the board select you for, to fill the position? You don't have to use a lot of it, long-winded.
Because because I'm a charming person. Regardless, regardless of my pain, I can still have a little bit of sense of humor.
Yes, yes.
Seriously, seriously, the board, I'd be honored to be a part of this board. And I know deep in my heart that the board would, would appreciate me being a part of the team.
All right, sir, are you gonna be able to hang around for the second round? Can, can you hang, can you hang around?
I will pace and see how it goes.
All right, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Malik. So now we are going to have, by virtue of the alphabet, poor Mr. Washburn has been very patient and so we'll bring him on. First question will come from Director Edwards.
Mr. Washburn, the same question, why should the board select you to fill the position?
Well, it's not because of my expertise in water, as I explained before. I'm good at dealing with complicated numerical decision problems. And that, that's what water management and allocation is on the peninsula, so those, those skills might be of use to you, that's why I want to be on the board.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. And Director Riley?
I'm here, let me just scroll my notes here a little bit. I'm, Mr. Washburn, you're, you're, you're new to me and I'm, I know you've been a longtime resident. But I'm trying, I'm trying to sort out how your experience or how your working knowledge applies to our dilemma and, or our, our responsibility, I should say. So what, what do you think in, in, in policy language you would bring to the board?
It's sort of the same answer I gave previously, I guess. My approach to quantitative decision problems or my approach to complicated problems is quantitative. I'm inclined to gather up all the data and see where it leads. I'm good at dealing with situations that have risk in them, which is the one that we're dealing with now. I've done a lot of that in my life. And maybe I'm not answering your question, answer, ask it again if I'm not.
Well, I'm, I'm asking that you, you've kind of described yourself as a quantitative decision-making, I don't know, specialist of sorts.
Right.
And, and I'm curious about how that skill set applies to policy issues as opposed to, you know, problem solving. I'm trying to get a little above and beyond the, the, the quantitative side of the discussions that we might end up having and decisions we may have to make on the board.
Well, to me, just by saying policy doesn't make it non-quantitative. But to me, one of the, the benefits for buying out Cal-Am is not so much to get Cal-Am out of the picture as to get the PUC out of the picture. They, they have a lot of implications about operations through their dictums about how Cal-Am is managed. For example, the amount that I pay for water here in Monterey, the incremental gallon of water that I consume costs me all of one cent. You may have expected me to complain because it's large, I'm complaining because it's small. If I were to double my water usage, my, my water bill would go up by fifteen bucks. How is that possible to, to be the, the right way to manage the system in a, in an environment where we're running out of water? If we have a water shortage, then somehow our other guys like me ought to be paying more than a penny a gallon for it. That, that policy was approved by the PUC as far as I know, proposed by Cal-Am and approved by the PUC. That's a policy, but it's quantitative.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. And Director Paul?
What do you think the difference is, Mr. Washburn, between the role of the board compared to the role of the general manager?
I guess I think as a, as a board of, as giving direction to the general manager. Maybe I'm naive, but that's my role for the board.
Thank you. And Director Anderson?
Mr. Washburn, have, have you attended any of the Water Management District Board meetings, either in person or virtual?
I have not.
Thank you.
Very good. And Mayor Roberson?
Hi, Al, it's Clyde here.
Hi, Clyde.
We go back, what, forty-two years now, I think?
A long time.
Long time. Al, you've heard it before, the same question, the voters through Measure J have asked the Water District to have a public utility to buy out Cal-Am. As a director, how would you make that happen?
Well, first, Clyde, I don't remember Measure J being that, I thought that we asked to have buying out Cal-Am be tested as to whether it was feasible or not.
Good point.
And so let me ask you a question, what would it cost to buy out Cal-Am?
Well, that, that's what we're studying right now, but since I'm not applying to be a director, I'm gonna ask you.
Well, I don't, I don't know what it would cost to buy out Cal-Am, but to me, that is a vital question that needs to be asked before deciding how to implement buying them out. Maybe we should not, it depends on what it costs.
Yeah.
Thank you, and you're exactly right, that Measure J was to see if it was feasible, thank you for that.
Okay, very good. And finally Supervisor Adams?
This is an odd question you'll probably find.
I'm used to it, I'm a faculty at the Navy School.
Okay, good. Did you play team sports as a boy growing up?
Yes. In Pittsburgh, where I grew up, we played softball and street football.
And how would you equate that to working on a board?
I guess I would not equate that to working on a board.
Okay, I'll take that as your answer, thank you.
But, but I will say that it's my nature to be a team player, I'm more of a team player than a leader. And leave it at that.
Succinct, thank you.
All right, fantastic. So Chair Edwards, I'll put it back to you, we can begin a second round or you may caucus with your colleagues and find out if there's a burning desire to have a second round or if it's just particular questions by particular directors. We're only an hour and a half into the meeting. So we're, we're making decent time, I appreciate all the candidates' patience, it is definitely an interview. Because, you know, we've heard teamwork talked about a lot, these six people want to make sure they have the right person for their team. With that, Chair Edwards, do you want to go back into rotating through, just as we've done with the first question, or change it up?
Well, I don't, we, we we can keep going like we're going. I don't want to shortchange people because I, I started the second question.
Right.
So I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to have that second question. And I know it's, you know, I'm looking at mine, we're about an hour into this.
Yep.
End of the questions, so do the board want to continue? Or do you want to stop and Director Riley want to continue? Vice Chair want to continue?
No, what I, what I, Chair Edwards?
Yes.
What I'd like to say is, I personally don't think I will ask any further questions, but if other board members want to, then I think we should do that.
That sound good. Director Roberson, did you, you had your hand up, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I thought there was a really interesting question that was brought up and it's one that I use when I, I have the honor and the responsibility of making recommendations to boards and commissions in the city of Monterey. And one of the questions our directors brought up was, and I'd love to hear from our other applicants, is how often have you attended water board meetings, either physically or virtually?
Well, great, can we hold that as your second question and we'll go, we'll go around and directors who have no further questions can pass. So let's bring, let's bring back Kevin Dayton.
Okay, and he, and he answered my second question, I do believe, that's why, he can move on.
So we're moving to Director Riley.
Director Riley for Kevin Dayton?
Yes.
Can I pass one and come back because I got a list of questions, but I've
Sure.
Thank you.
Terrific. Director Paul?
I have no additional questions.
That's, that's right, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
I'm ready.
Okay, Director Riley?
Yeah, hi, Kevin again. So you presented a point of view that is pretty specific. So you presented a point of view that is pretty specific and pretty global and pretty significant change in direction, I think, for the for the district.
I acknowledge that, yes.
Well, I think so. I mean, that's kind of how I'm reading it. But my my question is with a with a particularly strong point of view that you expressed, how do you describe pulling your own weight if you were a member of a board?
Well, here is the key is finding that common ground. And I I just, I wrote an article for the Salinas Valley Business Journal because in the most recent elections on the local level, we had a lot of people elected who perhaps are a little more critical about the business community than had been in the past. And some people were upset about that, saying, oh, you know, people have been elected that don't like us. And I I said, well, you know what? I I think actually you have a lot in common. And for example, the the desire to have people living in density housing in central city areas such as Salinas. I said, that's, that's, that's an obvious one right there. I said, I have many friends who are progressives, where I work very well with them in the so-called YIMBY movement, trying to get housing built for people who, you know, can't afford to live here with the current market conditions. And one thing I, as I mentioned before, I would like to work on with with you is I believe that everybody on this board is, of course, elections have happened, is still supportive of trying to to get a break on the on the water so that we can get that seventy-five acre feet for for affordable housing. And I'd like to continue, continue to try to do that and really push it hard because you know, I I commute to Salinas sometimes. And I feel really bad when I'm on an empty road on Highway sixty-eight and Highway one. And in the other direction, I see wage workers backed up for miles and how much time they have to spend from home. And I say, you know what? It's because of policies that the people in my community are are all are okay with that's making this happen. We really need Garden Road. We need people to be living in more places to live. What am I, what are my kids going to do? You know, my kids are gonna, my son's gonna go to MPC. He's gonna be living at home. And I don't know what it's gonna be, but I, you know, they, both of them realize, you know, this we're probably not going to be able to live here between limited job opportunities and the high cost of housing. You know, throughout Monterey County, people leave and they go elsewhere and they don't come back. And that's a shame and that's that's not a good economic vision for the area. So I'm going to look for things like that. And I know there are some good minds on this board. And I'm going to bet also that my ideas about trying to find ways for right water recycling and things like that. You know, that's, that's reuse. That's a, that's a good thing. You know, there are ways we can go on this.
Thank you. Director Anderson?
What are two or three of your personal attributes that you think would serve the Water District Board particularly well? And just briefly, I mean, not examples, but what what do you think?
Sure. Well, first, you'll see from my letter and my comments, I try to have a a vision. Mr. Stolte has a job and he has to manage the staff and and handle sort of things. And I sort of picture the board being, you know, broad, policy-based people saying, what what is the needs of the community? How do we serve the people, the ratepayers and the people who live here and look at the destiny of this area? And how do we plan so that this is a, this is a great place to live for for people who would like to do so? So vision is one. Secondly, I'm very good with strategy analysis. You know, I'm very experienced with public policy and writing, reading, speaking in public, things like that. And also a third is, as you can tell here, I'm not afraid to to say what I think. And something that makes me frustrated sometimes about some of the alleged, you know, more pro-business people, they're always hedging and being ambiguous. You know what? I'm just going to say it as it is. And I know people aren't going to like it. I'll give you one example right now. And this probably gonna make some of you angry. I support the lights at the high school football field. And, you know, I was a few weeks ago hiding my bushes and somebody yelled, Kevin, go jump off a bridge, as he drove by. And you know what? I say, you know what? There's going to be differences of opinion on this. And I don't like to see this idea that people who enjoyed something in the past don't want to provide it to younger people. I'd love to see my kids be at a high school football game at night like I used to. And I understand where the neighbors are coming from and something can be worked out. But, you know, right now, it's, there's going to be a lawsuit about it. So and they've already spent, you know, three hundred thousand dollars just on environmental review. It's sad.
Okay, good example. Let's, let's move on to, I guess it would be Mayor Roberson. And I don't know if you wanted to ask the question that you raised or if you've got a different question.
No, it's the same question is, how do you keep yourself informed on in the about the Water District? And that is, do you attend meetings physically as well as virtually? And do you study the website? And Kevin, I probably know the answer to that. It's the same question I want to ask.
Yes, I have an advantage in this particular thing because I actually work in the business of of policy. And some of the website actually needs to be updated, but I know how hard it is to find the DMS for a thing. But yes, before I, before I had this meeting, I spent a few hours reviewing everything, figuring that I might get some very obscure questions about rules. And I don't have all the rules memorized. But I'll tell you one thing, as a board member, I'm going to be familiar with all those rules. And I'm going to say, what, where can we make these rules better? Which ones should be rescinded? And, you know what? I know this kind of stuff. It's my vocation and my application.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And darn it, we were going to ask every candidate, how many fish were rescued in 2019? So
My answer is not enough. More ladders.
Supervisor Adams?
Thank you. Kevin, when you have a difficult, difficult decision to make or a problem you're trying to solve, what processes do you use to come to a conclusion?
I use pro-con lists. And I really make an effort to know what the other side is saying, just like those lights at the high school football field. I look at it and I say, the advantage is enjoyment for kids, school spirit, a tradition in America of football, an opportunity for for community. And then I say, traffic, people parking, kids running around after dark, people standing up with lights. Which, and then I say, ultimately, which side is going, can we meet, can we find some way that both people will be, both sides will be somewhat unhappy? And I never say somewhat happy. It's always somewhat unhappy. And and move forward from there. But ultimately, sometimes you just got to make a decision. Well, you know this. And you're going to have half the community angry with you when they're going to put letters in the editor saying how bad you are. And, you know, they're gonna, you know, call for recalls and things like that. And so, you know what? I say when you do that, just stick to your guns. And if you do get, if they do recall you, you know what? You just weren't representative of what the Democratic was. But I, you know, I do have my own opinions. I I do. I I think we always need to be cautious about government control, for one thing. Not that businesses are perfect. They have their own profit motive and they have their own issues too. But, you know, I I I'm very careful to say, you know what? I I I don't want too much force being applied from other people on on what people decide to do. And that's one of the reasons why I I want to see a sufficient supply of water defined by the user more than what the government does.
All right, thank you. Mr. Durbin, if you would rejoin us and once again, we'll start going the opposite direction with Director Adams.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you the same question. When you find yourself in a difficult situation where you need to make a decision, how do you go about coming to conclusion?
The first thing I start with is educating myself on what the options are and what the key decision or problem is. If there's a team, talk to the team, get them together to exchange ideas. Make sure everyone has a voice to express their opinion on the team. Or discuss it with the stakeholders. And then after I get as much information and education about the issue as I can, I look at the facts and the data and make the best judgment call that I can. And from an operations background, I'm always asking myself, what is the worst thing that can happen? And and sometimes I've found in the public sector, you can get pretty out on different ideas. And we also like to ask ourselves, what if we do nothing about this? Because sometimes issues can seem bigger than they are. And sometimes, at least in operations, doing nothing sometimes is an option.
Thank you.
So data and facts.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thanks. And and Mr. Durbin may have answered this already, but the question is, how have you kept yourself informed on the Water District's activities? Have you been attending meetings physically or virtually and on the website?
I'm going to be honest, I have not attended physically or virtually, but I have looked at the past videos. I used to work with Suresh Prasad, so I always like to see how he's doing. We work together at Marina Coast Water District. And I'll be honest, I have not read through your last agenda packet. It was one hundred and ninety-two pages. Come through it for some highlights and looked at the graphs. So I I haven't recently. I spend a lot of time in other agency board meetings. But I'm, feel like I'm very familiar with the the mission that you guys are trying to carry forward right now on the board.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Director Anderson?
I'm going to pass. Thank you.
And I know that Director Paul is going to pass. So Director Riley?
Actually, actually, I do have a question for Mr. Durbin.
Okay.
Mr. Durbin, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Washburn. How do you see the role of the board as a be the general manager?
Being in the sector for so long, looking at the variety of work. I'm sorry? Board's responsibility?
Um, well, was my question clear? I have my internet connection is not very
Yeah, we had a little
Yeah, I think so. The the role of the board is to to set policy and and guide and manage and support the general manager as much as possible and leave following through on those policies and staff decisions through the general manager. So I I would, I would be reaching out to my Division III constituents and and hearing what they, what they want to hear about and bring those issues to the board, but really setting policy and guiding the general manager on decisions.
Okay. Director Riley?
Karen, you preempted a direction that I was going to go in. That's fine. What I want to follow up on, Mr. Durbin, is the community connections. How, what, what, what? What, how would you describe your connections to the Monterey community? Because this is, this is a division representative. And that's my my question.
Right. So my my connection is my wife was born and raised here. She was born at Community Hospital as well as all her brothers and sisters. So I have in-laws here in Monterey. I I lived in the Montavista neighborhood for the last fifteen years. I have worked in a variety of public and private settings. I worked for the Sea Ranch Company all the way up in the Sonoma Coast. I've worked at Marina Coast Water District for eleven years, so I've got lots of agency contacts. We worked with Joe Oliver back when he was still working for the Water District, outstanding fellow. And I have a lot of common common contacts with people like Martin Feeney and other experts in the field of water supply. I I feel I I really care a lot about the Monterey Peninsula. And I'm really proud that at this point in my career, and I'm in a position to sit before you and and really justify why I should be on this board. So, you know, and I know people that work at Cal-Am. There's some great people over there. I've got friends that work at Cal-Am. So I don't know. Does that answer your question, Mr. Riley?
That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it does. And finally, Chair Edwards?
Yes, thank you, GM. What do you believe are the three biggest challenges that face the district now?
Excellent question. Evaluating if the public buy, if the public should buy the Cal-Am system. That's, that's a, that's a big one in itself. Diversification of water supply and not putting all our eggs in one basket. And the third one our districts for
Oh, you you broke up a little bit.
Yeah, Mr. Durbin, would you
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, repeat your third one just a little.
The third one is staying clear of the politics. I've been in the water business a long time. Politics and water are hard to separate. It's important that we stay focused on the mission of the board and not being swayed by finger pointing or people blaming other agencies for things. We need to work together. So I think it is really important that we don't react to the politics and do what our mission statement is. And that's to apply the community with a sustainable water supply and protect the environment.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. So we're moving to Mr. Eisenhardt. This has been a test in patience. That was also part of the plan to see who could tough it out. So Director Edwards, we'll start with you.
That's that same question that I just asked. What do you believe are the three biggest challenges facing the district?
Well, obviously, the track going forward after Measure J. You know, not just acquisition, but also the precursor. I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I I actually sat and read every word and every letter of the EIR that has led now to the pending litigation. And we're not even getting to acquisition. We're just fighting over the EIR, which I can tell you is, I'm I'm sure Mr. Laredo will agree. And this is going for a while, and it's probably going to go up to our friends at the sixth district. So you know, that, 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 that's, that's going to be a lot of work. Separately, obviously, is is water supply. And, you know, just listening to your meeting and dealing with some of the big decisions you were making regarding installing chlorine filters and the other things that you talked about to deal with the aquifers. And it's, by the way, riveting stuff to me, extremely interesting. But it's a big deal, not too dissimilar to what Mr. Durbin said. On the environmental side, obviously, I think there's been some enormous successes. But obviously, it's building upon those successes. And I know this is more than three. I'll throw in a fourth one there, Director Edwards. And and that is be careful what we wish for, right? I support acquisition. But once we become the public utility, I I think there are, there are pitfalls, especially in dealing with the public at large and avoiding misperceptions, politics and other, other, other types of things. It's easy to cast stones at at Cal-Am. But but now, all of a sudden, down the road, what happens when those stones are cast at the district? So I think that is a long-term scare and that it's something that we could think about and and mitigate and prepare for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Riley?
Hi again.
Yes.
I assume everybody makes mistakes. I assume you're not excluded from that.
I I excel at it.
I'm wondering if you can describe any particular mistake that you taught you a lesson, what you learned from it?
My gosh. I, I'm, I'm being overwhelmed. There's just too many of them, Director Riley. But seriously. Well, there's, there's different categories. Obviously, if you, if you there's, so, there's different categories. Obviously, if you, if you, if you, if you cross somebody, you misspeak and you didn't, uh, mean to leave a trail of, of, of dead bodies, you know, behind you. One of my things that I've, I've learned over the years, which is exceedingly important, important, is, 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 is fix that. Look over your shoulder. See if you've left, uh, people, uh, wounded. Pick them up, fluff them off, apologize and, and make it right. That's sort of my, uh, uh, general philosophy I have. Um, um, and I'm trying to, but you're asking, I think, for more specific. A mistake. Boy, you, you just, you got, you got me here. I have to give you a specific example. Um, just cause there's so many, right? Um, how about, uh, one time, this is a true story. You need, I, I'll try to be brief. I know, uh, Mr. Stole, we gotta be brief. I was, uh, I'm a baby lawyer. I was trying a case in front of a jury. And at that time, I was unduly influenced by a TV show that was far from the way lawyers should behave. And at the beginning of my, um, uh, summation, I was walking in the courtroom looking to the news. I hadn't said a word yet. I was gonna do my closing argument. And I ended up behind the defendant, who was a landlord, a residential landlord. And I put my hands on his shoulders and I started to massage him. I hadn't said a word yet. And I said, and we had, we were asserting the defense of retaliatory eviction. My client was the resident tenant in eviction case. And as I'm massaging him, I finally spoke to the jury. I said, ladies and gentlemen of the jury, and I gestured my hands to the back of his head and I said, how'd you like to have a landlord like this guy? Now, if you're not a lawyer or you don't know, that is wildly inappropriate. The judge literally jumped out of his robe and screamed and yelled at me right before I could even start my summation, uh, with the jury. Uh, and how did I fix it? Uh, like any New Yorker, I fixed it by yelling even louder than the judge, apologizing, telling him to sit down and, uh, and, and, uh, and proceeded to do my summation. We ended up winning that case.
Very good on your feet, Mr. Eisenhardt. We're all sitting here going, I'm glad I'm not being interviewed by you.
No kidding.
So, uh, let's move on to, uh, Director Paul, if you have an interest, uh, or you can pass.
Oh, you're unmuted?
Um, Mr. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Since you so graciously answered Director Riley's question about mistakes, I'm gonna go the other way and ask you to tell us about one thing you've done in your life that you're particularly proud of.
Yes, thank you. Um, my, as you may have seen in my, um, um, statement of interest, my wife and I have two, two sons. They're, they're grown, uh, in their mid to late twenties. Uh, when we were much younger and the kids were very young, uh, we took in a complete stranger, um, and she was fifteen at the time. And, uh, was with, for reasons that I don't need to get into, was without a family. And, um, we, we brought her in and we became her, her guardians. And, um, ironically, she was from Seaside, uh, the peninsula area. And, um, that was a challenging time, uh, for the whole family. And, um, as bad and as difficult and as challenging as it got, um, we have dedicated and rededicated and rededicated our commitment to each other. And, um, all five of us. And, um, I'm, I'm extremely proud of that because now she's thirty-five years old. She is my daughter. She is very special. And I can't even imagine, um, what life would be like if we did not commit all of us, uh, to that, uh, to the point where, um, for Christmas, she gave me a book. That's a daddy's daughter book. And basically you fill in answers to questions. And we've been literally mailing it back. She lives in Arizona. We mail it back to each other and back and forth where we keep adding new comments, learning more and more about each other. And, uh, the rewards just keep coming. So that's what I'm about, among others.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Eisenhardt. Uh, Director Anderson?
I wanna get back to, uh, Director Riley's question to you about, um, that experience you had, uh, giving a, a massage during a trial. What, what specifically did you learn from that?
Oh, gosh. Um, um, what was the, uh, Stop Watching Ally McBeal? No. Um, uh, and that was the TV show. No, um, what I learned was that, you know, when, eh, 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 let me just expand on that a little bit. When I was, when I was a young lawyer and was, um, uh, at the time doing criminal defense, you know, the DA and the police, they were the other, you know? And, uh, and the whole weight of the government was on one side and me and my lonely defendant client was on, on, on the other. And so you have a lot of prejudging and a lot of insensitivity when we're young to the larger picture. Um, that was an example. Um, the fact is, is that we don't do those things and that you can't be too grib when, uh, you're in that kind of process. And of course, as I've gotten older, um, and, uh, um, stopped knowing everything, uh, what, what we, what I've learned is that, um, it's important to respect, uh, all people, even if they're on the other side of a lawsuit, even if they're on the other side of an argument. What I really learned was that. What I learned was everybody just wants to be treated with respect. And, um, even in the lawsuit, uh, even if you're adversaries. Um, and just on that note, you know, uh, many, too, too many millions of people have died eh, for the right to have our First Amendment, very unusual, um, we're the only country to have one. And when people say you shouldn't talk politics or religion or those kinds of things, I bristle, uh, because you should, because we have that right. But the trick is listen and be respectful and don't. Um, and I learned, that's what I learned.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, let me, um, and you may have answered this already, Mr. Eisenhardt, and, and thanks for that great story too about your daughter. Eh, as a thirty-five-year elementary school teacher, it really hits my heart, I'll tell you. And so you may have answered this already, and that's how, uh, how you've informed yourself about the water district, have you?
No, I.
Obviously, you probably have had to attend virtually because you've been here since we've pretty much been in lockdown.
Correct. Um, um, first of all, the first thing I did when I saw the opportunity to apply, I guess, December, um, is I went on the website and just voraciously read everything. You have a lot on your website. Um, not just the EIR because it's a legal document. It was interesting to me. But your mission statements, your forecasting statements, I don't remember the name of it, but it, where you were setting sort of goals, uh, the goal-setting statement. On the environmental side, especially when it comes to the Kona Valley and the river, I mean, how amazing is that? I was just, uh, and it's all very dense. Um, I, ironically, the one thing I didn't read and, and absorb very closely were the rules and regulations. I, 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 I didn't get to that. Um, and then, uh, of course, I did a, 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 attend a meeting, uh, earlier this week. Uh, by the way, uh, although I only attended one meeting virtually, boy, that was enough. If I can just say, being on other boards in, in other organizations, uh, Director Edwards, uh, you run a tight ship. Uh, thank you for that. I can't even tell you how many times I've been in a board meeting where it just goes down a rabbit hole and it's painful. Um, and, um, so, uh, that was, uh, that was nice.
Thank you. And, uh, Director Adams?
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, let's check on the sciatica.
You looked up.
Softwater, are you still with us? And check your microphone.
And you're muted.
You're muted, sir. Sir?
I'm muted again.
One, one more touch, Softwater.
There you go.
All right.
I'm done with my story. Go ahead.
So Supervisor Adams, we're gonna start at your end again and head all the way.
Um, aside from being, um, utterly charming, what other qualities do you say you would bring to this board?
At one time, I used to live in your district.
Okay.
Well, if you're in District Three, Softwater, you're already, you're still in her district.
A good part of that district does not fall under Cal-Am district, uh, jurisdiction or, or the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. Right?
That's true.
Yeah. Anyway, that's so, um, I'm sorry Supervisor, I don't remember the question.
So, uh, well, I sure, uh, disarmed you with, uh, talking about your charm. I'm sure that was it. What, uh, what, um, characteristics would you bring to the benefit of this board? The personal characteristics?
Open-mindedness is the first thing. Being open-minded, listening to every point of view. And then I can come up with my own decision after I have done my own study as well as listening and taking into account all the points of views that have been shared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, let's, let's see. Yeah, a- and the same question that is, how have you informed yourself about the water districts, policies and actions by attending meetings physically or virtually and studying the website?
I have a lot of spies.
I'm sorry?
I said I have a lot of spies.
Spies.
Okay.
No, it, I have been involved in a war issue in the peninsula for the past ten, fifteen years. And then the last two or three years, for personal reasons, I have kinda took a, a sidestep. But I'm still passionate about what's going on. And with the composition of the board at the moment, it appears from an outsider that eh, politics have subsided a great deal and rolling up your sleeves and getting down to business is more like the, the, um, the norma, the normal, um, affairs of a board. And I hope I'm right. So that is really the reason for me to, to look into the opening and, um, and see how I can contribute from my previous knowledge and, um, and various activities that I've been involved in.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Malik. Uh, Director Anderson?
I don't have a new question for, for Mr. Malik. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Director Paul?
No more questions for Mr. Malik. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And Mr. Riley?
Uh, hi, Safwad. Uh, I hope you can sit still for this question, but, um, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm aware of, uh, some of your involvements on the peninsula. You are an architect. You have been, uh, some kind of developer over the years. Uh, do you, are, are you in any position? I, I, I'll ask it slightly differently. Um, do you see any, um, any issues that are coming before the board? Uh, that may put you in a position of recusal or, uh, conflict that maybe you should let us know about? Thank you.
Right now, I don't see any. And as I have shared with you, that my benefit is the community benefits. And I am taken it that it is the same as the, as the vision of the board. So I don't really anticipate any friction of a sort. It, it could be, uh, because of my involvement in various projects, that there is something that would be a conflict of interest. And of course, I would recuse myself immediately. But I can, I can't think, I can't think of any such event.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Director Edwards?
You're muted.
Thank you. What do you believe are the three biggest challenges that facing the district at this turning?
Finding water. Finding water. Finding water.
That's one, two, and three. All right, sir. That's all I have for you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Malik. And, um, keep in mind, uh, we have one more candidate. We're at the two-hour mark. Monday's board meeting went three hours, so this is not atypical. And we're doing, I think, some fabulous, uh, line of questioning and, and work here. So, with that, uh, we'll bring back Mr. Washburn.
May I excuse myself?
Yes, and, um,
Uh, unless you don't wanna hear the verdict.
I am very eagerly, uh, waiting to hear the verdict. I may read about this in the morning.
You can go that route.
Yes. Well, and in fact, all the candidates, uh, after Mr. Washburn will not be, uh, asked to speak again, so it will just be public comment and deliberation. So you have that. Everyone has the option of, uh, checking out and finding out what happens later or using, uh, text or email to find out. So with that, um, Mr. Washburn, uh, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. And, thank you. A good night.
Good night.
All right, Seth.
Feel better.
I try my best. Thank you.
And Director Edwards, we're gonna start with you. Um, let's make sure Mr. Washburn is back on with his microphone.
I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Washburn. Uh, my final question is, what do you believe are the three, three biggest challenges facing the district?
No, I'm, I'm not on here.
Uh, Softwater, hit mute, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm quit.
There we go.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Washburn.
Am I unmuted?
No, you, you all right. You, you're good to go. The three challenges that facing the district.
Number one easily is, should we build a desal plant? Uh, number two is should we buy Cal-Am? And number three is where they hide all those Easter eggs or something. I really only see two big iss- issues.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Director Riley?
Um, I wanna just check a, check the fact and then ask a question. Uh, you retired, uh, from Naval Postgraduate School, uh, when about?
In two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, so fifteen years ago. Uh, okay. So my, my question is, uh, in terms of working with people, uh, whether it's team or, um, some hierarchy of some sort, my question to you is, how do you, how do you handle people who annoy you?
Whoa. Usually, uh, try not to get into verbal spars with them or avoid them or something like that, I guess. Uh, I, I am able to disagree with people without being annoyed, however.
Great. That, that, that is a skill. Um, shall we move on? Director Paul?
No questions.
I'm sorry, no questions. Okay. Director Anderson?
Uh, let me go back to the one you just answered. Um, since, since like on a board, for instance, you can't really walk away from a disagreement. Do you have, uh, ways that you can continue with somebody that you don't agree with to come to a mutual decision or a mutual disagreement? Do you have the patience to do that?
Uh, I, I, I think so. I mean, I'm an academic and, uh, academics frequently disagree with each other, as you probably know.
I do.
Uh, and, uh, a lot of people I, I still disagree with and we're quite good friends.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mayor Roberson?
Yeah, I believe Al actually initiated and stimulated the question that I had asked previously, and he'd answered it already, so.
Okay. Well, forty-two years of friendship, I guess, so you can pull those answers just telepathically anyway.
There you go.
All right. And finally, Director Adams.
Mr. Washburn, can you tell me four things that if I were to ask someone that they would say about you?
Four things?
How about three things?
Well, I tell pretty good jokes, but we don't have time for that. I'm a very analytic person. I think others have said that. I'm extremely charming.
Oh, we've got competition.
Word of the night.
And those are the only three I can think of.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Was there a follow-up question there?
No.
Okay.
Supervisor Adams, what are you worried about?
What I'm worried about right now is whether or not we're going to be able to get vaccines for all the people in Monterey County. I'm worried about whether the floods are gonna do any harm to the county. And I'm worried about ensuring that we move forward with the water issues that we have and wanting to ensure that the person that we select, or if we don't select someone, how we're going to deal with that, so that we can move forward with the biggest problem that we have on our entire peninsula.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm glad I was last on the list there.
Well, I wanna thank you, all five candidates, for dedication of your time, your statements of interest, and your candor in the Q and A. I think it was very helpful. I think it was very demonstrative to the public that we've got some good people who are very interested in serving on their behalf, which is what it's all about as a community. So again, all the candidates are released. You're welcome to stay on. I believe that Joelle will move you back from panelist to an attendee, which means you'll be able to see us, but we won't be able to see you. Joelle, you got that right?
May I say one more thing before I go?
Absolutely.
I will certainly understand if I am not seated in the, the Board for District Three, because there are some excellent candidates for this board. I'm very impressed by the, the others that have applied. I'm also very impressed by the board itself. Would be an honor to be on the board. That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you. And.
Well, thank you, sir. Since we let him get a closing statement, I hate to not let the rest of you do a closing statement. So you, you, you got that minute to do a closing statement since we let him do it.
All right, let's, let's go to the top. Kevin, just a quick summary, less than a minute, please. Mr. Dayton?
Okay, yes, I must have missed that as I was being transitioned in. I figured coming in here that I probably didn't have much of a chance of getting an appointment, because I do have viewpoints and principles that perhaps may not match the consensus here. Also, that may not be supported by a vocal segment of the community. However, I'm leaving here pleased that I came here to talk about things that concern me that people are afraid to talk about, such as population decline, enrollment decline at the school districts, and the issue that forces outside of the control of people are determining what kind of water they have, what kind of business they can set up. I believe that this is, all these things are, are signs of a struggling. This is a very special area. I understand the quality of life thing. But we should not impose a quality of life standard on the rest of the community that makes it detrimental to live here. And I think about my own children and what's going to happen to them. I think about the people you don't see showing up at every meeting or trying to run a small business or trying to make it here and how water policy issues that they don't even know about are playing into their destinies. So I wish you, wish you the best on this, and you'll be seeing me, seeing me around in water policy, I'm sure, for many years to come. Thank you.
I know we will. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Durbin? If you can unmute and join us?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the board for their excellent questions and their time and their thoroughness. Very important board, as you all know. And I am very impressed by the people who have applied for the seat. I'd be honored to serve on this board. I'm very passionate about water, and I would be very hardworking and make all the meetings. And I think I'd be a great contribution to the group. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you for yours. Thank you for yours. Mr. Eisenhardt?
Yes, thank you. You know, every time a client sits across the desk from me thinking about whether or not to hire, hire me or hire our firm, I, I almost uniformly acknowledge they're never really gonna know if they got a good lawyer until after they took the plunge. It's frustrating and it's unfortunate, because they could look me up, they could look at my record. But you just never really know until you do it, and it's a bit disconcerting. I'm not sure that any of you will ever know until after the deed is done if you make the right choice or the wrong choice. And so you go with instinct and, and other things like that. It's not an easy job. So I wanna say, and it's really not an easy job, because like my colleagues here who are applying, there's a lot of really good people who are applying. If I get the gig, thank you. And if I don't get the gig, thank you. This has been a wonderful process. I've really enjoyed it up until now quite a bit. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you for your thoughts. Joelle, you can release all of the candidates.
One more. Oh.
Yeah.
He's gone.
He, he went for sciatic relief, so.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we will now be moving into public comment. If you wanna organize that and let people know what your plan is, we'll go from, from there.
Well, public comment is gonna be two minutes each. So if we can set the clock up and open up public comment, we are taking public comments and no questions to the candidates.
Yes, and just so you know, we have twenty members of the public attending. Some of them are our candidates, and others are probably just listening. So I, I think we'll get through public comment relatively on time.
Okay. So, Joelle? Open up public comment.
Okay, so this serves as a reminder to members of the public. If you are participating by phone, please make sure that you use the raise hand function. And if you're calling in and watching on your computer, please turn off your computer speakers. And if you're participating by phone, you would need to press star nine. And we will identify you by the last three digits of your phone number. You may identify yourself for the record and then present your comment. So I see here, Melody Chrislock, she would like to make a public comment, so let me go ahead and allow her to speak. Melody, when you're ready, go ahead and present your comment.
Melody Chrislock, I would like to support your consideration of Softwath Malik for the Division Three position. I've known Softwath for a number of years. He's an architect, and more than that, he's a green builder who really cares about the environment and the goals of sustainability. He's a local businessman whose value community involvement is well-known and very much respected. His projects range from many local homes to a wastewater plant in Saudi Arabia to the beautiful Unitarian Church in Monterey. It's used by so many of us for community meetings. The reason I think he would be a great fit for your board is that water is inherently tied to building and development. It would seem very valuable to have the perspective of a builder on your board. You had G. Byrne previously, who was an architect, and now that she's left, you don't have that perspective from the other side of how the community needs the water to grow and develop. So, that being said, I, I asked a number of people about Softwath for their comments. And some of the key words I got back in response, and it was amazing how many positive responses I got, were trusted, conscientious, a team player with a reputation for working well with others, careful, a careful thinker, logical, and fair. I was quite surprised at the response. It was very enthusiastic in support of Softwath from the community when I asked those questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Luke with the City of Pacific Grove. Luke, when you're ready, go ahead and present your comment.
Yeah, this is Luke Colletti. I'm speaking as a resident of Pacific Grove. So I'm just speaking on behalf of myself. I wanna make that clear. I wanted to let the board know that, you know, one of the most, one of the things I most admired about Molly Evans, the former Division Three director, was her common sense and ability to cut through the jargon to arrive at the core truth. With that in mind, I believe Mr. Durbin best embodies these qualities, and I, I offer that for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're muted, Joelle.
Are there any members of the public who wish to make public comment at this time? I have Susan. So go ahead and move Susan over. Susan, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joelle. I'm urging the board to evaluate its choice in light of the current goals and legal mandates that are present. I support a candidate with specific expertise that might help the board during this period of enacting Measure J. Considering future development needs and projects that are sustainable and environmentally appropriate is important. Policies and decisions must include considering future demographics, growth, impacts of climate change, environmental justice, and the stewardship of those resources managed by the MPWMD. In reviewing the applicants, it seems like Mr. Malik has both business and environmentally aware development expertise. He's well-known in the community and respected, and seems to have been involved in a lot of other community efforts, even though he may not talk about that. This combination of skills might be useful on the board, especially since you no longer have Jane Byrne. This is a critical two-year period in terms of legal and project decisions. So choosing the candidate that best matches what is needed is important. Thank you and good luck.
Okay, next up, we have Anna Thompson. When you're ready, Anna, go ahead and present your comment.
Yes. Good evening. I choose the applicant that will best serve our community interests. I believe it is very important that the person you choose not only has the necessary knowledge and experience for the job, but has clearly demonstrated through their past actions that they are trustworthy, care about sustainability, stand for environmental justice, and support the Pure Water Monterey expansion and community ownership of the water system. Most of all, please do not choose anyone who has shown a bias against the public ownership of our water system. We, the public, want to have a say in what is best for all our communities. Dealing with Cal AM has been a very exhausting and painful experience. In my opinion, no for-profit corporation should ever be allowed to control our water policy decisions. A corporation will always opt for a solution that will bring the highest returns to its shareholders. I trust that you would choose the right person. I too know Mr. Malik, and I believe that he meets the qualifications to serve well, but I believe also there's other candidates there that may also meet those qualifications. I trust that you would choose well and, and consider what's most important for all our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's beginning to look like that's it. Joelle, do you see any others?
No, there's no hands raised. So Chair Edwards, I return this matter back to the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board, public comment is closed. What's your thoughts?
And maybe opportune at this time for General Counsel Laredo to give you a sense of how to conduct a decision if you do choose to nominate. I, I think he's got some thoughts on how to make it open and not preemptory. Mr. Chair?
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
I've taken a careful review of Robert's Rules of Order. There are a surprisingly large set of options for the board to follow. I believe that the option that Robert's Rules frames that is the most streamlined for a board of your size is to allow open nominations from any board member. According to Robert's Rules, a nomination need not have a second. When it appears that there were no more nominations to be made, then there should be a motion to close nominations, a second, and a vote to close nominations. If nominations are not closed, then you would continue to have nominations. Once nominations are closed, you would then go by roll call, and each person would indicate the one individual who was nominated that they'd like to, to see selected. You will continue to do that until all have, have indicated. If you do not have four, signifying that they would have that, then you would do a, the, the exercise yet again. You would accept nominations, see if, and, and, and vote to see if you can get a majority that supports an individual. Whomever you select, I do suggest at the end that you choose to have that be a unanimous decision if possible. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any board questions to General Counsel? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Are there other options for us? Could you please just repeat the other options, which I know that we have, and the deadlines that coincide with those?
Well, other options for nomination could be that you would actually move a nomination by motion and second and vote. Other options would be that, that you would go down through the nominations and have a vote on each nomination, yea or nay, to see whether or not there are four people voting. It's more cumbersome to have a motion and second for each nomination, and forcing votes for and against individuals has people having to vote against individuals, and that is also awkward. The other option, of course, is that you can choose not to dominate tonight. You could put this off. You have to exercise, if you are going to appoint or if you're going to set for election, your deadline to do so is February 12th. If you have not acted by February 12th, this board is divested of its authority to act on this. So one option could be to continue this meeting to a later time, sometime before February 12th, either for more time to reflect or to have you individually research some of the candidates. Or the other option would be to actually open the canvas up to select, to try to solicit more expressions of interest.
And if we were to open it up to have additional candidates who may express interest, could we keep the people who applied this time as well?
Yes, definitely.
All right.
And then, and keep in mind that if you choose to accept nominations and vote tonight, but don't have a majority to select someone, that that's your fallback option, is to then continue the meeting, solicit other candidates, and then return to the question of nominations. As long as it happens before the 12th, it has to conclude by the 12th.
Thank you. Director Riley, you had your hand up.
Yes, I'm impressed with the candidates. I'm impressed with the questions that were asked. I'm impressed with the answers that were given, but I'm not necessarily impressed with the field that we're dealing with. And I don't mean that as derogatory to any particular candidate. I would like to have a wider choice. I would like to suggest that we consider reopening it up to do nominations and setting a hearing in early February before the 12th to review what happens as a result of reopening the applicant period.
Okay, any other comments from board members? Any other comments? Okay, go ahead, Director Riley.
If so, then I make such a motion, but I don't know, Dave, what the specific language ought to be. Reopen the nomination process and set a deadline, and all in time for board review and consideration before February 12th.
General Manager, do we have time to put out a ad? For candidates? Do we have time between now and the 12th to be efficient at putting out an ad?
We do. I just, I want to apprise you of maybe three or four different things. We do, we are attempting to schedule a strategic planning workshop in mid to late February, and then a follow-up final workshop in early March, so that will be a demand on your time. I feel that we did a very good job of beating the bushes trying to get candidates out, and we had a few surprise candidates who I think showed very well. So I'm not sure what success we'll have in expanding the pool. And I guess, third, if we did expand the pool, I don't believe we would want to subject these candidates to the same process whatsoever. But I'm personally not optimistic that there's, you know, another set of candidates out there that unless you have some inside knowledge of folks. We even checked the P.O. box a couple of times after the date to see if there were any late arrivals, and there were not. So I'm not suggesting that, you know, expanding the pool or going, you know, we do that all the time with staff searches sometimes, and, you know, you get a blown search and you go further. But again, you know, I think in listening to some of you board members tonight, I think that there are some candidates that you find very qualified.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Okay, Director Roberson.
Dave, David, what's the least expensive option for going to election?
Least expensive would be a standard election with polling places on November 2nd. If we were to head down the path of a mail-in election, it would still be, it would be August. It would be more expensive because we have to do two parts. One is a district-wide election to hold mail-in elections, and then a Division III-only election to appoint, to elect that director.
Yeah, we had discussed that at our last meeting, and so what we would have if we went that way would be an empty seat until November 2nd of this year.
Correct.
Right, and we're planning on making a decision on moving forward on Measure J before then. So, General Counsel, go ahead.
Actually, the vacancy would not end on November 2nd. It would have to wait until the election is canvassed and the vote is certified and brought back to you, so that may not actually occur until December.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Director Riley. You got your hand up.
I nominate Safwat Malek.
Second.
Don't need a second, but appreciate it.
Oh, that's right, we don't need one. Okay.
Any other nominations?
If there are no other nominations, a motion to close nominations would be appropriate.
I move my motion we close nominations.
I'll second that. Discussion on the...
On the motion?
Yeah, discussion on the motion.
I think timing is important. Time is important. We've got strategic planning sessions coming up. We've got important decisions coming up. The sooner we can get a full board in place, even if it's with a newbie, that's all right with me. We've got some other newbies on the board, but I think getting them all in the, in the right corral for the strategic planning discussion, for the interaction with the board members, for the education process, for the comfort zone that's got to be created for a board to work together, and so on. I think the sooner we get that settled, the better off the entire district's going to be, but also the public is going to be. So that's, that's part of my reason.
Well, I second your com, go ahead, Vice Chair.
I agree with that, and, but I, I feel ready to make a decision tonight, not only because of these time factors, which are real, but I would not rush it if I felt that we should take more time. But I think we had, we had very strong candidates with very different sets of skills, and I, I think we can make, you know, we can make a choice tonight. And I happen to believe that the best, the candidate that brings the best set of skills that we, that the board, as it's currently constituted, needs that would complement who's already there and for this moment is Mr. Malek also, who has such a great history of working with other people, is committed to environmental responsibility, and we would have someone from the business community on the board, which we currently don't have, as Melody Chrislock pointed out. And that, I mean, other candidates brought, bring impressive skills in other areas, but I feel, I feel that Mr. Malek would be an excellent choice. I'd love to see him on the board with us.
Thank you. I second it, so we can start moving along. One thing that I'm concerned about, that candidate, is he healthy enough to take this on? That's one of my concerns, and I want to find out, or I want to delay it, substitute motion to, to, to put this off until we can find out if he's healthy enough. The last thing I want to do is put something on the, put somebody on the board, and next thing you know, five, six months, he's leaving us because of...
Yes, Mr. Chair, I don't think that's a risk. sciatica is something that's treatable. He was in pretty good physical condition, and George, you've probably seen him more recently than I have.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, you have a motion on the floor. You should be having a vote on the motion to decide whether you're going to close nominations.
Okay, oh, okay, that's, okay, are we going to close nominations? We all vote.
Director Paul? I'm sorry, we're voting on the motion to close nominations?
That's correct.
Or...
A yes vote is to close nominations.
Yes, I vote yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
No, because I started making a comment.
Mr. Chairman, procedurally, the nominations have been closed. The question is, you have one nomination, you can hold the vote on the nomination now, or you could take some other actions, such as continuing this, or whatever other action the board wants, but you, you have one nominee.
All right, thank you. So back to us again. I'll probably be outvoted on this, but do we do it tonight, or do we wait and fight? General Manager, you were saying something about sciatica. Could you finish that?
I was just saying, I don't think it's a, it's a long-term debilitating issue. Typically, people have episodes of it and recover, but I am not a doctor, and I did not stay in a Holiday Inn last night, so I have no knowledge.
I'm not a doctor, but I've had sciatica, and when it hits you, it is the most painful thing you can ever imagine. I'm surprised you could even be with us. It's so, it's so awful. And then it goes away, and you're okay.
Okay, Director Riley?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Mary. I've had sciatica too. It can be treated. It's been several years since I've had another recurrence. I don't see that as debilitating.
I agree. I've had it too. Physical therapy does wonders.
Right, yeah.
Physical therapy and ICE.
All right, I got all you doctors.
You've got it down.
I got all you doctors out there, and I'm the alternate on most of these, so, okay, I'll let you know. Okay, how do we proceed, General Counsel?
A motion to approve the nominee as the, to, for appointment to the Division III seat. A motion to approve the nomination.
Okay, do we have a motion out there to approve the nomination?
I saw.
Director Anderson, wait. Director Anderson, got a hand up. Go ahead.
I saw Lou that we, movie had with a vote on the nomination.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Who threw out a second, Vice Chair?
Mary.
Mary. Okay.
Mary and I both did so.
Yeah, I'm moving around. Director Adams did the second. Discussion. On the second, if I may, I want to thank all the candidates for applying. I want to thank you all. You all had good choices, good, good words, good words out there. Kevin, I appreciate you applying, and don't feel sad about the way it turned out. You did good, and all of you did good, and I appreciate it. And some, certain things that this district is looking for. And we got a lawyer, we got a general manager. And sometimes I think people are applying for those jobs. I just be frank for you, with you. I think people are applying for those jobs, general manager and general counsel, and we don't need no more of those. We got enough of them. They caused enough trouble for us. So I just want to make sure that everybody, that we all know that you did good tonight, and I appreciate you applying. And I would open it up again, but it's hard to find. Director Evans didn't have anybody run against her, and then she left. And then we got six candidates. We had seven, and they started dropping out. I don't think if we went to an election that we would have that much participation. We have a lot of money being thrown out there that shouldn't be wasted. So the district made a decision, and I'm going to back that decision and the nominee, and I hope the new director can carry out his business, and I appreciate all that the board did and the staff did in making this happen. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, before you go to the vote, since we still have everybody's attention, I do want to let all the candidates who are still on know that I will personally debrief with some of the board members and then call them either tomorrow or by Monday. And also, this appointee only serves through the next general election, which will be 2022. And so anyone who is smitten by the prospect of running still has that opportunity two years, less than two years from now.
Thank you, General Manager. Sarah, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Director Roberson?
Aye.
Director Paul?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. We can't sway him in tonight, so we set something up for him. That's, anything else? General Counsel, General Manager?
I know, that is it.
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, I want to thank the board and the staff for the hard work they done tonight, meeting adjourned.
I've got a little bit of bad news for all of us. I just heard that a chunk of Highway 1 has gone down, so the road is impassable again now. It is just north of Big Creek in that area, and it's...
That's the new segment of the highway that they repaired last year?
No, 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 much, much further south than that.
Okay.
Closer to Muscia, so. All those things that I told Mr. Washburn, I have another one to add to the list.
Hey, I like how you did that, too. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Great job, Chair, as always.
Great job.
Yes.
Great job.
Thank you.
Hard job.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.